We are having a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 urban renewal budget as approved by the Budget Committee. Do we have Director Quayar on the line? I guess I should have checked that before calling the meeting to order, sorry.
Yes, she is on Zoom.
Oh, perfect. So, we are going to open the public hearing and ask our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So, this budget hearing is for the Urban Renewal District. And what was published in the paper on May 31st is the detail of what was approved at the Budget Committee at its May 17th meeting. So, this is part of Oregon budget law. We're now members of the public, after having the opportunity to review what the budget was approved by the Budget Committee, to offer comment so that council can take that into consideration when you all look at appropriating budgets at your next meeting on June 28th. So, that's all I have. If anyone has any questions, or I could, if you would like, I can put the notice up that has the details in it if that would be helpful for anyone.
Thank you. I think we'll just go across the dais. Sal, any questions?
Quickly, I just want to state for the record that Counselor Minkie is on the line.
Thank you. Adam? Counselor Minkie, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there any public testimony? If so, please come up to sign in and state your name, testimony? No? Is there any public testimony on Zoom? No? Okay. In that case, we will close the public hearing. And...
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. And just for the record, we received no comments via the web portal either on the urban renewal district's budget.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay. I'll now adjourn the meeting at 6:35 PM. And we have a break until 7:00. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm going to call to order the city council meeting, uh, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, seven P. M. And, uh...
Councilor Garvin?
Here.
Councilor Geary?
Good evening.
Councilor Minkie?
Here.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Present.
Councilor Peralta?
Here.
Interim Mayor Drabkin?
Here. Thank you. And, uh, Councilor Garvin, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, we will now do the election of our council president. Um, so the, uh, the council president, um, serves in a couple of different capacities, um, including, uh, filling the seat of mayor in case of the mayor's absence, um, but also in a leader, leadership position, uh, for the council as a whole, um, and takes on additional responsibilities with that, with that role. Uh, we will now undertake the election of the council president. We'll begin with nominations. Any counselor may nominate any other counselor. A counselor may nominate themselves. Nominations do not have to be seconded. If a counselor is nominated but does not wish to be considered for council president, that counselor may decline the nomination. When the nominations appear to have stopped, I will call for any more nominations. When I hear no additional nominations forthcoming, I will close the nominations. I will then read the names of the nominees. Each council, counselor will vote for one nominee. If one counselor receives a majority of the vote, I will declare the result of the vote. If no counselor receives a majority of the vote, the counselors will vote again. We will continue this process until one counselor receives a majority of the vote. No nominee may be dropped from consideration unless they voluntarily withdraw themselves from consideration. Does any counselor want to make a nomination for council president?
I nominate Adam Garvin.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. Adam Garvin, Garvin has been nominated as council president. And would our city, uh, city recorder please take each counselor's vote?
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Councilor Minkie?
Aye.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Aye.
And Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
So I have to skip all the steps in case it didn't go correctly. Um, wonderful. We had now, uh, um, you do, mm.
Number eight on your script.
Thank you. Um, I now declare Adam Garvin the council president by, by a vote of, uh, six, five unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Uh, we're now moving into our proclamations for the evening. We have three proclamations. We're starting with a, uh, Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Month proclamation. Is our Parks and Rec director on Zoom by any chance?
I am, Mayor, and Katie Noid is going to be presenting this proclamation to you tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. We have, um, Katie Noid present.
She is present.
Oh, there you are. Wonderful. Thank you.
Trying to get going. All right. Can everybody, I'm going to say the thing. Can everybody see my screen? Yes. Yes. Okay. So thank you, uh, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Katie Noid with McMinnville Parks and Recreation, and Sam Geary is from the library is on the call as well. Uh, thank you for recognizing Parks and Recreation Month, which we'll be doing in just a few minutes, uh, for July. This year's theme is We Rise Up for Parks and Recreation, and the library's summer reading theme is Read Beyond the Beaten Path. Both, both of these themes are encouraging people to participate in our activities, go outside, and enjoy the outdoors, and to have fun. This is the second year for summer fun, and we have more activities, and we are super excited to share those with you tonight. So our goal, or our plan to provide, um, or, sorry, our plan for summer fun is to provide community members with fun and healthy opportunities to connect, uh, since we've missed out on that the past couple of years, to learn and to stay active. Our guiding principles include inclusivity, being creative and mobile, reaching those who are furthest from opportunity, and optimization of city capacity. Uh, ways that you can get info about summer fun is by picking up our Summer Fun Passport. Um, I laid some out for you. If you're a council member, um, at, at your diocese tonight, um, you have, uh, one of the passports as well as, uh, one of the calendars. But you can pick that up at the Parks and Recreation Facility or at the library. Each of these are in English and Spanish, depending on which way you turn it. We also have a QR code that directs you back to our website at bit.ly/maxsummerfun. So there's lots of different ways, uh, for you to learn about what we're doing this summer. Um, we are going to be kicking off this summer with our Read and Play kickoff on Wednesday, June twenty-second in Lafayette at Joel Perkins Park with the Bookmobile and a performance by Red Yarn. Then we will have a summer fun kickoff on Saturday, June twenty-fifth, from twelve to two, at Discovery Meadows Park with the Pan Wizard Steel Orchestra. So it's a kid, um, kids' steel orchestra, which is really fun. Um, we'll have a clown, and we'll have lots of fun and activities. The, uh, library's summer reading challenge is for all ages, and you can log your minutes on paper or through the app, and you can win prizes. Uh, Read and Play is the new name for the collaboration of the Bookmobile and Recreation Activities. Our staff and community partners will be going to six different locations and checking out books, doing activities, and themed projects. So this lists all the places that we will be going to and visiting, uh, this summer, and we do that weekly. Oops, sorry. Um, also this summer, and I get this question a lot, are summer concerts coming back? Yes, they are. Um, last year we only had three. This year we will have five, and they will be down in City Park again. Uh, we have five concerts kicking off on June twenty-eighth, and we will also be having all-people yoga prior to those concerts. So you can come at five-thirty, do yoga, and then listen to the music. We have a lot of fun, uh, bands, including Second Winds Band, um, our community band on July twenty-sixth. Um, again, this summer, another popular summer fun activity is movies in the park. Uh, we will have four Friday night movies in the park at Joe Dancer. Um, those are listed on the screen. Activities will start at eight P. M., and movies will start later when it gets dark enough. Another staff favorite is, was Wednesdays at Wortman. Uh, we're switching over to East Wortman Park, um, off of Lafayette this summer, and we will be having different performances throughout the summer. June and July will be a cultural series, and then August we will have kids and family performers. Uh, this is a great way to experience different cultures and enjoy music and different types of dance. It was one of our favorite things. We got to participate with all the kids, and it was great to have the adults out there as well. Um, next up, uh, this, I'm just going to go over a few, um, few of these real quick. These are things that we did slight changes to based on feedback. Our wellness walks will be on Mondays and Wednesdays. Mondays will be easy routes. Wednesdays will be a little bit more difficult. Uh, we added preschool playdates on Monday. The purpose is to have kids and parents of those, parents and guardians of those kids socialize, uh, since they missed out on a lot of that for the past two years. So it's a good way to bring everybody together. And then our Move It Outdoors program, which is a free fitness class. This will include child supervision at the playgrounds nearby so that parents and guardians and whoever's bringing those kiddos can participate and have fun, uh, doing those fitness classes. Um, we have, this year we have a hundred and fifty activities planned. Uh, we didn't realize this till this week, so we have a lot planned for everybody that are free and fun. Uh, we've added multiple community picnics. Uh, we are partnering with the police department on National Night Out. We will have a team night with laser tag and a pool party, um, in City Park. Uh, we are very excited about the opportunity to bring all of these to our community. All the activities are free, so we hope to see you this summer. Uh, no registration is needed for any, any of the things that are in our passport, but they are free and fun all summer long. And if anybody has any questions, let me, let me or Sam Geary know, and we can help you out with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
I, I just have one comment. It, uh, it all looks really good, and Hiram, it's time to go to bed.
Oh.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Well, we'll follow that up with the designation of July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas McMinnville's Parks and Recreation programs enhance, improve the social, economic, and environmental fabric of our community, and whereas our parks and recreation programs are important to making McMinnville a super cool place to live, and whereas parks and recreation programs make people want to live here, and whereas parks and recreation areas help the environment and give us fresh air to breathe, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas make for fun places for kids and adults to go outside and play, and whereas the city of McMinnville recognizes the benefits of awesome parks and recreation resources, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby extend the spirit of fun to the residents of McMinnville in recognizing the month of July as National Parks and Recreation Month. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand this sixteenth day of June, fourteenth day of June in the year two thousand twenty-two. Signed, Remy Drabkin, Mayor. Jim. Next, we are, um, having a Pride Month proclamation. Um, so we are, uh, this is a designation of June as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month, whereas the fight for equality continues for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQIA and other historically marginalized members of our community. And the responsibility falls on each of us to form a more equitable and inclusive society. And whereas the city of McMinnville pledges to honor, exhibit, and otherwise live out our core values of stewardship, accountability, courage, and equity. And whereas June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one marks the fifty-second anniversary of the Stonewall Uprising, six days of demonstrations led by Marsha P. Johnson, a black transgender woman sparked by the targeting and arrest by police of lesbian, gay, and transgender bar patrons in violation of their civil rights, an event widely recognized as the beginning of the modern gay rights movement. And whereas on June second, two thousand, President Bill Clinton declared June to be Gay and Lesbian Pride Month to commemorate the June twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising. And on June first, two thousand nine, President Barack Obama expanded the commemoration by declaring June to be Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month. And whereas the city of McMinnville stands with the LGBTQIA plus community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all and to defend and advocate for LGBTQIA plus rights as human rights. And whereas despite this extraordinary and inspiring progress, LGBTQIA plus Americans continue to face discrimination simply for being who they are. And whereas the city of McMinnville commits to advocate for protections for all LGBTQIA individuals to make, uh, our city a place where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, interim mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand this fourteenth day of June in the year two thousand twenty-two. Remy Drabkin, interim mayor. And we have a proclamation, um, for the commemoration of, uh, Juneteenth, um, which of course is being recognized as a national holiday this year. Um, and, uh, and so a proclamation for the commemoration of Juneteenth as an annual celebration of Black African-American liberation. Whereas Juneteenth is recognized, recognized as the end of chattel slavery in the United States, and whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation effective June first, January first, excuse me, eighteen sixty-three, declaring enslaved people in the Confederate states to be legally free. However, that proclamation could not be enforced in lands under Confederate control. On April ninth, eighteen sixty-five, Confederate forces surrendered, effectively ending the Civil War. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, bringing news of the president's order freeing enslaved people two and a half years after it was first decreed. This day has since come to be known as Juneteenth. And whereas Oregon's exclusion laws lay the foundation for generations of economic hardship, hardship, exclusion, and discrimination against Oregon's Black African-American community. And whereas through other systems of oppression, such as sharecropping, Jim Crow, exclusionary and destructive housing and transportation policies, denial and disruption of voting access, and mass incarceration, the plunder of Black bodies and Black wealth continued past slavery and persists to this day, affecting the physical and mental health, safety, and education of Black African-Americans. And whereas despite these obstacles, Black African-Americans in Oregon have been and continue to be vital community members and leaders within our state. And whereas Juneteenth has been celebrated in Oregon since nineteen forty-five, when Clara Peoples moved to Portland from Oklahoma to work at the Kaiser shipyards and introduced it to her coworkers. And whereas the Oregon legislature has unanimously voted to recognize Juneteenth as a legal state holiday beginning in two thousand twenty-two, now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, interim mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby recognize and proclaim Juneteenth, June nineteenth, uh, as an annual celebration of the past, present, and future of Black African-American liberation, and those who continue to work to realize that liberation. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this fourteenth day of June, two thousand twenty-two. Remy Drabkin, interim mayor. Uh, we're now at the portion of the evening where we'll be taking comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments and comments. Any comment, um, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments, um, will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. If you wish to speak, please use, uh, the raise your hand function if you're in Zoom. Um, once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may send a chat directly to the city recorder, and we will announce you. Are there any public comments? If you'd like to come join us up here and state your name and address for the record, that would be wonderful. Thank you. We have Nicola Clark. Thank you.
My name is Nicola Clark, and I live at three-three-five Southeast Lincoln Street here in McMinnville. Good evening, council and mayor. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to address concerns that not, not only I, but many other citizens of McMinnville have, um, concerning the city of McMinnville proclamation designating, uh, June as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month for the city of McMinnville. And, uh, first of all, I, I do have the shared concerns, uh, in regard to the proclamation, which I believe that everyone can agree that we, all people should be treated with dignity and respect, and that we need to build more on things that we have in common than things that divide us. Uh, no one should be discriminated against. Uh, there should be no subsets of people. We all have human and inalienable rights. Um, however, I think we need to be very careful when these rights turn into a self-focused pride, um, a pride of self-obsession, uh, self-importance, self-gratification, vanity, narcissism, and so on. Um, this is where we need to stop and turn our pride into humility. When we humble ourselves, we put others first, and we turn that inward or self-focus outward towards others, which is when we truly live out our values of stewardship and accountability, which is in the proclamation as well. When we turn from pride to being humble, it's then that we begin to work toward equal treatment and equal protection for all people. And the ones that I'm most concerned about, um, being in need of protection, however, are children. They're vulnerable, impressionable, and unprepared to deal with, uh, the more extreme and overtly sexual connotations that are shared at events celebrating this month of pride. And we will, of course, be having the Wine Country Pride events, um, some which are already going on. Um, so what will they be exposed to at the Wine Country Pride vendor booths? Um, will they see art and clothing mimicking genitalia? Will they see fetishist equipment and costumes in parades and drag queen shows? Um, are any of these things appropriate for children? Um, I would think not.
You're out of time, so if you could conclude your comments. We're out of your three-minute limit, so if you could conclude your comments, please. Thank you.
The pride events and activities are advertised as being child and family-friendly, but are they? Um, if only, if one looks at the broader history of Pride Month and Pride parades, which have flourished in San Francisco, Seattle, and New York.
Thank you for your time. You're at your limit. We do have a three-minute limit. I, um, we're at the end of that.
I just do want to say one more thing is I'm, I wonder how the council and you mayor will go forward in protecting our children, um, who are very vulnerable. And, um, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
None that have pre-registered.
It is hard to find new drivers and mechanics, so if you know somebody that's looking for a stable job, we are hiring. I did want to announce that one of our local drivers, George Humley, was named a National Driver of the Year for the National Waste and Recycling Association. He actually won that award back in 2020, but due to COVID restrictions, they actually postponed the awards ceremony until April of this year, so he's sort of delayed recognition for some great work for us. We're happy for him, proud to have him with us. An update on another, one of our long-term drivers, Dean Cook, recently had to retire due to health problems. Dean's family was the family that started Western Oregon Waste that became what's now Recology Western Oregon, so he definitely, he will be missed. On our customer service side, we have some ongoing staffing issues with that department. We're down a couple of positions, and we're still training some new reps. This can impact customer hold times. As our staff are continuing to work remotely, we do have some reps that cannot connect to our phone system over the internet due to speeds available at their home, but they can't answer emails. That means the best and sometimes fastest way to reach us is by using the email address Okay, moving on to the rate review. Revenue has been close to projections, so that helps with that side of the equation. We've seen larger than, every time, larger-than-expected inflation, with CPIs running eight and eight and a half percent recently. Our labor expenses are up due to higher wages and increased cost of benefits, and us projecting to have a full crew. Disposal is up due to an increase in the transfer station, and that's pegged by increases in landfill rates and the transport costs. That rate had been the same since we opened the transfer station back in 2018. Our fuel costs are up significantly over last year. We're currently paying $6.05 a gallon for our 99 diesel. A year ago, the Oregon average was $3.38 a gallon for the same. Under other operational expenses, we buy a lot of things: carts, containers, parts, trucks, computers that go in the trucks, chips that go in the computers that go in the trucks. And all of those things are hard to get, and when we can get them, we're paying a premium for them. So those issues are chucked up to the supply chain that you hear about every night on the news as well, so we're not immune from those problems. Our projections show that we would be inside the operating ratio range specified in our collection agreement. As a result, we are requesting a CPI-based adjustment. While the CPI came in at 8.6% for April, our agreement caps CPI-based adjustments at 4%, which is the reason why we're requesting a 4% adjustment this year. For the 32-gallon cart with weekly service, the increase is $1.12 a month, with a new rate of $29.11 a month. For a 90-gallon cart with weekly service, the increase is $1.87, with a new rate of $48.54 a month. For context, there was no increase last year, and the increase in 2020 was 2.9%. We've also adjusted the debris box ton rates and haul rates to reflect the difference in haul times and disposal ton rates for the transfer station. Debris boxes are the large metal boxes we deliver for construction sites, home remodels, other large projects. These changes were different than 4% and different for each rate. They can be found on page four of the rate sheets. Our one-off boxes for residential jobs are charged a flat fee based on average disposal and box size. Customers with credit apps on file pay haul fees plus disposal fees. We're asking that you approve this rate request so we can get the new rates into the system and into effect for July 1st. That's all I have prepared, but I'm happy to take any questions you have for me or Chris or Ernie are here to help out in case they're tough questions.
Any questions from councilors? Thank you very much for your presentation, gentlemen.
Thanks for having us, and we'll be back a little later in the agenda.
We're going to have a public hearing regarding the consideration of a planning commission recommendation adopting the Three Mile Lane Area Plan as a supplemental document to the city of McMinnville Comprehensive Plan, and amending the Comprehensive Plan, Volume Two, Chapter Six, Transportation System, to add a proposal to amend the Comprehensive Plan map and Transportation System plan consistent with the Three Mile Lane Area Plan, Docket G 721. Please note that this public hearing will be continued to the July 26th, 2022, City Council regular meeting. And I think it would be fair to say, off-script, that we did get some feedback about why we would be continuing this meeting, and it was very specifically to allow additional time for public comment and public input, and to make sure that there was a lot of clarity of information as we've been disseminating it. So I'll just answer that. And with that, would our planning director, Heather Richards, please give us a presentation of the proposal?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and councilors. Just for clarification, you will need to vote on continuing the public hearing to July 26th. That is a staff recommendation to do so. And I also wanted to let people know that Bill Kabeizman, who is our legal land use attorney, is representing in this process and is on the Zoom recording for that. I'm going to share my screen really quickly. Okay, so this is considered what we call Jocket Docket G 721, just for the public record. It is a legislative initiative. We are recommending that you continue the public hearing to July 26th after taking public testimony tonight. That's coming from the basis that we're starting to see a lot of thoughtful dialogue occurring in the community on many different levels about this plan and what's in the plan, what it does, what it doesn't do. We're seeing a lot of discussions now on social media. We're seeing discussions amongst neighbors. We're having community groups reach out to us for information and setting up time for presentations. And the Parkway Committee is continuing to do their own due diligence. And so with all of that, we thought this would be a great opportunity to continue to have dialogue as a community about this plan. Since it is a legislative initiative, you aren't under any sort of timeframe in which to consider this and take a final vote. We will, over the next six weeks, engage in an active public engagement program. I'll be working with our communications manager so that we can get out communications to the residents to let them know about the conversation and how to participate in the upcoming public hearing. There's been a lot of people who have reached out to us to say, "We haven't heard about this. We want to know more about what's going on, and we also want to know more about how we participate in the overall dialogue." We'll be doing things such as, we did several years ago when we started this effort, which was to go out to the parks, go to the community center, go to the library, go to all sorts of different venues in which our residents are interacting with each other to try and get the information to them about this. We'll also be working through social media for the people who are participating in dialogues there, and then we'll be giving presentations to community groups as well. And we'll be, we're talking about working on a mailer to go out to all the residents So tonight's discussion, just to remind everyone, it's not about the quasi-judicial rezones that are currently in a public hearing process, that we have gotten some testimony about that. Why do we feel it's important to separate the two? The reason is, is that this is a community plan. It's coming to you as a recommendation after four years of community discussions and public participation. And so this is representing what the people who participated in that wanted to bring to you as the city council to consider. It's an area plan. It's a very high-level plan. The quasi-judicial land use applications are requests from private property owners and are very specific to those properties. They are in the planning commission level right now in a public hearing process and are being looked at through a different lens in that regard. So what is an area plan? An area plan is, it's a high-level community vision. So this, and it's developed by community members. And some people have really struggled with this, and I think that's because here in McMinnville, as we look at development projects, we're very specific about it. So McMinnville has a history of looking at planned developments as site development plans, and then adopting ordinance is really specific to that site development. And this is a really high-level, 30,000-foot-level concept plan, and it's used to help guide future public facility planning in a large area. It was literally drawn by community members and charrettes that we did, as well as public open houses and town halls. So what comes to you as the last, final community land use vision is something that came out of that process. There's been a lot of discussion that this is a plan that's being driven by either property owners or by the planning staff. This really is, what is coming to you as a final product is what's come out of that community process. That community process involved hundreds of hours of community volunteer time, where people provide their input, hundreds of hours of technical expertise from our consultant team and from ODOT representatives, as well as city staff. There was a refinement of ideas through public open houses, town halls, and surveys, and our job is to present that plan to you through that public process. What's interesting is, is that the area plan, it might help mitigate some of the concerns that are expressed about those quasi-judicial rezones. So the area plan is very specific and intentional about what the community wants to see happen in this area, has recommendations for design and development standards, and for land uses, and it's an opportunity for the community to really say, "This is what we'd like to see happen. This is what we'd like to see it look like." We've heard a lot of concerns about design, development, size of development. This is an opportunity in the area plan to put all those types of value statements together. The area plan itself consists of the plan and then five appendices. The appendices, the plan itself is only 50 pages long, so it's not a very difficult plan to read. And it has a lot of information in it in terms of those value systems. But then the appendices have all the informative information in it. So there's transportation analysis that went into this plan document. There was a market analysis that went into this plan document. There was an economic development analysis that went into this plan document that looked at how best to utilize and leverage this land to respond to the city's needs for high-density, high-paying jobs. And then there's design and development standards as well in terms of implementation. So the area plan is divided into several different chapters. I won't go through them. I've gone through them in the past, but they are succinct chapters that talk about what that community's recommendation is to you. And the question was asked, and is the big broader process, is what is the best way that this study area can serve McMinnville's current and future needs? And does the current comprehensive plan support that future vision? So the city's role is regulatory. So do our regulations support that vision? Is it able to move forward through the regulatory process? Our role is not specific in terms of what's, what the specifics of development are. It's what's the sandbox in which development occurs in terms of how we want to see that move forward. So if changes needed to be made to the Comprehensive Plan map to support that community vision, that's what we're looking at in this process. And then does those changes to the Comprehensive Plan map impact the transportation system in that area? So we have the project documents on both project site, which has all the informative documents that were put into it over the last four years. This was a grant-funded process through the state. It was ODOT grant-funded process. It was approximately, I think our grant in the end was about $275,000 for this. And then we have a public record page on our website, which is the page of all the public record through this, through this public hearing process at the planning commission and city council level. The study area is the Three Mile Lane area. It's this area right down to, on the southeastern side of the community. It's the frontage of a property that is on Highway 18 as it rolls through the city. This land is all within the city today. There's a lot of confusion about whether we should be developing this land or not. It's in the city. It's owned for development. The question is, how will it develop? And it's about 1,300 acres in total. The consideration for you is adopting the Three Mile Lane Area Plan and its appendices as a supplemental document to the Comprehensive Plan. And then there's also a recommendation to you to do a text amendment into our Comprehensive Plan that says that we will be amending the Comprehensive Plan map and Transportation System plan consistent with the adopted Three Mile Lane Area Plan as these properties come forward and develop. So this action that's in front of you isn't actually changing the Comprehensive Plan map. It's not changing any zoning on the map, and it's not changing the Transportation System This is the land use vision map that's come out of this process. We did enter it into the record on May 10th at your public hearing. We felt that there was a need to clarify the map because it had created some confusion. But this is really a bubble diagram as to what came out of that community process as to the high-level uses that people wanted to see in this area. It looks at housing, high-density housing. It looks at parks and connectivity in terms of trails. It looks at a retail center that's a mixed-use town center that's surrounded by industrial land, which is intended to be a sort of office-campus industrial entrepreneur site, which we're calling the Innovation Center. It looks at healthcare amenities for the hospital in terms of growing that out. The planning horizon for this plan is 20 years, so it's from 2021 to 2041. It's looking at how this land serves the community in the next 20 years. And we recommended changing the land use vision map so that more closely reflects what's the narrative that's in the plan document itself, because it was causing some confusion. The reason there was some confusion is because our industrial land allows a lot of uses in it that perhaps people don't see as traditional industrial uses. Research and development offices are allowed in our industrial lands. Healthcare facilities are allowed in our industrial lands. And we had identified those as land uses, but we had underwritten them with red, which is our commercial zone, and that was just a fluke on our part, and so that's why we moved forward with the revised map. So with all that said, there are three recommendations for Comprehensive Plan map amendments that came out of this process on three different sites. It's a total of about 70 acres more or less. In terms of the net acreage, we're looking at a total of about 53 acres more or less. And the reason for that is there's a lot of public right-of-way in that acreage, as well as some unbuildable land as well. But those three sites are recommended in order to be able to move this forward in regards to the community vision. So we have two sites, one and two, that are on the map that are recommended to be amended into housing and commercial. And so that's looking at high-density housing and It looks at healthcare amenities for the hospital in terms of growing that out. The planning horizon for this plan is 20 years, so it's from 2021 to 2041. It's looking at how this land serves the community in the next 20 years. And we recommended changing the land use vision map so that more closely reflects what's the narrative that's in the plan document itself, because it was causing some confusion. The reason there was some confusion is because our industrial land allows a lot of uses in it that perhaps people don't see as traditional industrial uses. Research and development offices are allowed in our industrial lands. Healthcare facilities are allowed in our industrial lands. And we had identified those as land uses, but we had underwritten them with red, which is our commercial zone, and that was just a fluke on our part. And so that's why we moved forward with the revised map. So with all that said, there are three recommendations for comprehensive plan map amendments that came out of this process on three different sites. It's a total of about 70 acres more or less. In terms of the net acreage, we're looking at a total of about 53 acres more or less. And the reason for that is there's a lot of public right of way in that acreage, as well as some unbuildable land as well. But those three sites are recommended in order to be able to move this forward in regards to the community vision. So we have two sites, one and two, that are on the map that are recommended to be amended into housing and commercial. And so that's looking at high density housing and neighborhood serving commercial for those areas, and that's a mixed use product. And then we have a commercial site that's on Highway 18 by Cumulus Avenue intersection, which is recommended to be 33 net acres, and it could be anywhere between 40 and 60 acres, depending on the public right of way improvements needed to support that. That's meant to be a mixed use town center that serves the residential areas and also serves the innovation campus. There's also a transportation analysis that's in the plan as well. The transportation analysis shows that this plan, moving forward in the next 20 years, still meets all the covenants of what our transportation plan is today. So Highway 18 remains a bypass. It meets all the standards for a bypass, and it meets all the standards adopted by the state for a state expressway and a freight route. It also meets our Oregon Highway 18 corridor refinement plan that was adopted in 1996, and it meets our transportation system plan, except for one addition. The addition that's in here is looking at moving forward into 2041, our transportation system plan only planned to 2023, that we will probably need an improvement at Cirrus Avenue to put a controlled intersection in there, and then shut down some of the local access points over in that area so that we can continue to remove access to the highway, which is what creates conflict on the highway and jeopardizes mobility. That Cirrus Avenue improvement is in the Phase One of the Oregon Highway 18 corridor refinement plan and still follows that process. There's been some confusion about that, though, because the plan does illustrate a roundabout. We want to make it clear that the nothing's been decided on whether that controlled intersection is a signal or a roundabout. You, as city council, when we brought it to you, had concerns about the roundabout, and we want to reflect that in the plan. And also, ODOT has concerns about whether it's a signal or a roundabout as well. A lot of people don't realize that transportation plans need to be reviewed by the freight committee at ODOT. And so the freight committee reviews everything as they continue to be designed and engineered, and they will give some final feedback on whether a roundabout or a signal makes the most sense in that area. The two signals that are shown on here on Highway 18 already exist today. They are not changing, and they are over a mile apart from each other. I think some people, the perspective's tough because we're looking at a piece of paper, but these signals are about a mile apart from each other. In terms of Highway 18 still being a state expressway, when we look at mobility on transportation facilities, we talk about it in terms of a VC ratio, and what that means is vehicle to capacity ratio at the intersections, and that's our standard. So we're always watching and managing that to make sure we're not exceeding that standard. And that standard is showing us what kind of congestion exists on the system. And so for a statewide expressway and a freight route, which is the second highest classification of mobility beyond an interstate, which is I-5 and I-84, we're looking at a VC ratio standard of .80. So that's adopted by the state that's in the Oregon Highway Plan. That's the standard in which we're always measuring what performance on these facilities. So currently, the performance on those, or I should say, in late 2018, early 2019, when this plan was first put together, the existing conditions of that performance of VC ratio on the two intersections on Highway 18 were performing at 0.62 and a 0.56. And what that means is the 0.80 is actually 80% of the overall capacity of that intersection. So it was performing at 62% and 56% at those two intersections respectively. Then when you do planning process to amend comprehensive plans in the state of Oregon, the Oregon Highway Plan, which is adopted by the state and the regulations that we need to follow when we're doing these planning processes, says you now need to forecast what will that traffic look like in 20 years, when you have full buildout of the property around it? So in 20 years, based on the peak hour, so the peak hour being the hour where we expect the most traffic to be traveling on that freeway in a normal situation, so obviously we're not looking at anomalies like the International Air Show or something like that, but a normal situation in a week, the peak hour, with all the buildout of that property to 2041 with growth, we are looking at a .74 ratio and a .63 ratio at those two intersections. So that's based on today. Nothing happens. We don't adopt the plan. It just remains today as already zoned and with the current comprehensive plan map that we have for that area, and we build out as expected to 2041 with our growth, that's what's expected to happen. So then we ran a scenario and said, okay, if we change it with those three comprehensive plan map amendments, what does that do to the traffic impact on the system in terms of those intersections and those standards? And they increased. The Norton Lane and Highway Oregon 18 increases to .76, and the Oregon 18 and Cumulus Avenue intersection increases to .64. So that's an increase of .02 and .01% respectively, if this area plan moves forward as proposed. It's all still performing, though, under that standard of .80. So that's the standard established by the state and adopted by the state. And so based on that, the findings for this is that it meets the standard. So it meets the standards per the state adopted regulations as to how this facility should perform in that 20-year planning horizon. Some of the things this plan does, though, that improves the mobility on Highway 18 is you're always looking to remove access, because if you remove access, then you're increasing mobility, and that's essentially what this chart is saying. And it's pretty intuitive if you think about it. Local streets, you have all the individual driveways hitting the streets, and your mobility's a lot less, and you can't go as quickly. And as you remove access, you get more and more mobility. So we are looking to remove mobility on highway, remove access to increase mobility on Highway 18. That's a goal. That's a goal of that 1996 plan that was first put together, and it's still a goal. And so that Cirrus Avenue improvement will remove several local accesses down towards that eastern end of Highway 18 in McMinnville, moving forward over that 20-year planning horizon. So the commercial rezone has really been sort of the lightning rod for this whole discussion that we're seeing as this rolls through the public hearing process. In the public process developing the plan, it was identified as one of the number one priorities was having a commercial site out on Highway 18. There was interest in having a grocery store, having gas stations, having restaurants in this area to serve the residential neighborhoods that were out there, and also to serve the community as a whole. We already had adopted a policy stating that we, as a city, would support it when we did a land use efficiency with our UGB amendment that we adopted in 2020, where we said we will not expand the UGB by needed 40 acres of commercial land by rezoning 40 acres of land from industrial to commercial at this site. At your public hearing on May 10th, you had some questions about that. What happens to the city if we don't move forward with that policy? We adopted it in our comprehensive plan with language that we shall do that. I have been visiting with both our legal council and with the state about that. So there's the legal parameters, and then there's the state parameters, because the state acknowledges our growth planning. And so just today, I heard back from the state, and they said that, I think the department's main, I'm quoting this specifically, "I think the department's main concern would be if, instead of rezoning existing surplus industrial land to commercial, you instead proposed a 40-acre expansion of the UGB to eliminate the commercial land deficit." We would definitely object to that. If the city were to remove the proposal to rezone excess industrial land to commercial along Highway 18 by itself, and then in a few years, return with a proposal to expand the UGB to satisfy commercial land deficit that's identified in a new EOA, the department would at that point comment that the city needed to once again inventory its existing vacant industrial land within the UGB to be rezoned for commercial land needs. So what they're saying is, if we choose not to move forward with that policy that we have in our comprehensive plan, when we do another EOA, which we need to do one by December 2023 and submit it to the state, if it shows commercial land need, we will need to be looking within the city, if we have surplus industrial land, for rezoning that land to the commercial land need deficit. We also had a recommendation that this be commercial, because we showed, and a market analysis showed that we do have retail leakage in this community. People are leaving the community to shop for general merchandise to the tune of about $100 million a year. We're also seeing restaurant retail leakage as well, which was surprising, because we are a community that's well known for its restaurants, but we suspect that families are traveling to other communities around us to get provisions that they can't get here, making a day of it, and going to a restaurant as well. When we were out doing a public process like those sign boards that I showed you, that's what we heard as a priority, is that people wanted more commercial provisions here in McMinnville, so they did not need to travel out of town for that. This is a residential area. There are a lot of residential neighborhoods in this area, and currently, we do not have any grocery provisions over in this area. We heard a lot from the residential neighborhoods that they would like to see a grocery store located over here. Their only access into town, more or less, is the Yamhill River Bridge, and they see themselves as sort of this separate area of the city that would need that type of provision. And then lastly, what we have heard from developers looking at the 200 acres of industrial land that's vacant in this area is that it's very expensive to develop that property due to the public improvements needed to develop it. We're doing an analysis of that right now. It's looking like it's something north of $10 million in transportation improvements to be able to develop that property for industrial development. That's a lot for industrial development to carry, and so the thought was that the commercial development could carry those improvements, and that would then stimulate the industrial property, the 160 acres remaining, into industrial development. This land has been vacant and in the city for approximately 40 years. We've had several people looking at it, and what we have heard from the people who have looked at it and walked away from it is that the public improvements, there's more than just transportation, are cost prohibitive for them to move forward with a project. There's been a lot of discussion about big box retail, large format retail, that that's the intention of this plan. That's not the intention of this plan. The plan doesn't recommend large format retail on this particular site. The only time it's mentioned in the plan is on page 13, when talking about the outcomes of the market analysis. And then big box retail is only mentioned on page nine, when talking about what our commercial zones allow. The plan itself, which was developed by that community process, is very intentional. It talks about a mixed use town center. That mixed use town center offers gathering spaces, walkable streets, more dining options than typical strip suburban developments. There's a whole description in there as to what that mixed use town center is meant to be. There's another page which talks about all the different elements that the project advisor committee that put together this plan is recommending be elements of that mixed use town center. So I think there's been some confusion relative to the property owner. The property owner is Kim Ko, and a lot of people are focused on what their past historic developments have been and what this plan is recommending. The city has the opportunity to put design and development standards in place that the property owner needs to develop to, regardless of who that property owner is. So if we say, this is what we want, and we develop design and development standards, which is like our local ordinance and code, then that's what the property owner needs to develop into. And so we have the opportunity to really say, this is the sandbox in which we want to see this property developed. And the project advisory committee that's recommending this plan to you is very intentional about what they thought the community needed to see in this area. That implementation recommendations that are in the plan walk through all those details, what those design and development standards should be, and how they should be implemented by the city moving forward so that the development occurs as the community would like to see it occur there. If those principles aren't what get us where we want to go, then we really should be talking about amending those. So that's the tool the city has, regardless of the property owner or what type of zoning we have out there. Design and development standards in our regulatory framework is the tool that the city has to be able to say, this is how we want to see this land move forward to serve this community. Right now, it's an M2 zone. An M2 zone includes all of our industrial uses in the city, ranging from heavy industrial to light industrial. And we have no design and development standards on it whatsoever. So any user can come in there that's an industrial user, heavy industrial user, and build something without any design and development standards on that 200 acres. That's a gateway to our community at this time. There was a question at the last public hearing about how do you manage the system? So we have a forecast for the next 20 years. We did, ODOT updated the transportation model for McMinnville. When we updated the transportation model for McMinnville, we included how the neighboring communities interact with McMinnville, because we bring people in for employment, bring people in for retail. So there's a lot of back and forth happening there. It also brought in the state system into that model, so how does the state system operate in terms of driving traffic through Highway 18? And then we ran these scenarios. But that's a forecast over 20 years. So there's concern that that's not entirely refined. And so what if, as we move forward over the next 20 years with development, how do we ensure that that system is performing at that standard that we want it to perform at, that .80 standard? And so you asked some questions about the process. How do we walk through that process? So both ODOT and the city review development that impacts Highway 18, and we review it at three different times. So we're reviewing comprehensive plan amendments, and we're reviewing them based on state adopted regulatory rules. So there's two rules that we're working under, which is the Oregon Highway Plan, which defines how we walk through this, and then what we call the transportation planning rule. The transportation planning rule says that if a development comes in and has a significant effect on how that transportation system is functioning, and affects it to such a point that it's not functioning to the proposed standard, then the city must put mitigation measures in place on that development so that it is then building what needs to be built, so that the system continues to function at that standard. So we're reviewing that when a rezone comes in as well. So if someone comes in with a comprehensive plan map amendment, we'll review it then. If someone comes in with a rezone, we review it then. If they come in with a rezone, we know a little bit more about what's going to happen. So if you use our comprehensive plan designations, we have commercial and industrial. We have three commercial zones, and we have three industrial zones. So based on the zone that they choose, we get a little bit more refined. We now know these types of uses can go on this property, and we look at the most intensive use for that property when we're looking at the rezone and the traffic analysis associated with that. Then, per the plan, a development plan has to go forward to Planning Commission and City Council for final approval. And so after the rezone occurs, there's another land use application, which has the development plan. And at that time, we're also doing another traffic impact analysis, and we're studying it even further in terms of how that particular development, because now we know exactly what it is, is going to impact both the local transportation system and the state system. So there's several different checkpoints along the way. ODOT operates in those checkpoints, as well as the city. We operate independently, but we collect each other's information and go back and forth, but both entities have authority in different ways. In terms of the public testimony received, this is what we received thus far up until the last public hearing process. We received several agency comments from different organizations, several resident comments, and several comments from people who live outside the city. And then this is the public testimony that we received since your last public hearing on May 10th up until this evening. And so these are entered into the record tonight and have been sent to you. What we sent to you last night was the last comments that we had received. We do, I believe, have Andrew Mortensen and Josh Anderson from David Evans and Associates on the Zoom call. If you have any specific questions about the transportation analysis itself, and any technical questions, they're here to answer those for you. So our recommendation is listen to the public testimony tonight. Continue that hearing to July 26. If you need more information or clarification on any other analysis after hearing the testimony, identify what it is, provide direction to us, and we'll provide that to you.
Thank you. Do any counselors have questions of staff at this time?
Heather, I had a question on the VC ratios that you talked about. So you gave a couple scenarios. You gave current level of VC ratios. You gave the 20-year projection for the VC ratios. Then you gave the additional VC ratios when you do the full buildup per the plan. So the final number we had was, if this was to pass, and then in 20 years, we add those two numbers together, and we have the potential VC ratio of 20 years from now, full plan development. Is that correct? Is that what you were showing me?
I think so. I don't think I quite understood what you said, but the second slide we had says what will happen today if will happen today if the existing comprehensive plan map and zones map that's out on that area develops over the next 20 years based on our forecast for development. So we use the PSU population forecast. That's what will happen to those two intersections. And so we call that the build-out year in 2041. And then what we did is we ran a scenario and said, okay, now let's change those three sites to the recommended comprehensive plan map amendments to support the community land vision, and what does that do to the numbers? And so that second set of numbers in 20 years was based on what those three amendments would do.
Okay, okay. Who did that calculus?
David Evans and Associates did that with ODOT. So the consultants from David Evans and Associates worked with the ODOT TPAO unit. TPAO is the Transportation Modeling Unit for ODOT, and then the ODOT Transportation Engineers.
And then in that model, is that sort of what, and even at any stage, those VC ratios, is that just our traffic, or what does it compute 20 years down the road for the combined traffic on that road at that intersection, given that 18 isn't just our road and there's build-out or at, you know, any point along the way beyond just the context of McMinnville and that area of McMinnville? Or is that...
I think I understand your question, and I wish. I don't see Andy or Josh on the Zoom call. They haven't popped in. So the transportation model that the TPAO unit puts together at ODOT is based on a couple of different things. It's based on this, so they model their whole state system, and that whole state system is saying, we're sending cars from Portland to the coast, and this is how they're traveling. So that sits on the model, right? And then they then take the McMinnville region of the model and say, okay, now let's start really looking at this in a more refined manner and start populating it with the growth around McMinnville specifically. We also brought in Lafayette and Dayton. How do they operate specifically? The state model is growing based on the state growth projections, but it's not as refined, right? And so the McMinnville model then starts to get more refined based on this localized area, but it's including presumably that projected state traffic, people traveling from Portland to the coast, and then our local traffic in terms of our people moving around both within McMinnville or Lafayette people coming into McMinnville or Dayton people coming into McMinnville and leaving. All that's in there. And what we do is we sit down and we look at, we call them TASs. I actually don't recall what TAS stands for, but it's polygon shapes that are in McMinnville, and we identify just how many households we think are going to be in each TAS and how much employment is going to be in each TAS, and they get down to that level of detail to put these models together. And it starts with an existing conditions scenario, so they'll take a snapshot at a certain point in time based on traffic counts and build from there.
I think what I'm hearing you say is that that 20-year build-out of the VC, based on as best we can hazard as a guess, should incorporate not just us turning our clock forward 20 years, but everyone who uses that road's clock 20 years.
Yeah, yes, exactly. The state, you know, the bigger you get with your examination and forecast, the bigger the margin of error, right? So that's just the reality. But yes, that state model is growing to 2041, just like we are growing to 2041 in our local program.
Thank you.
Any other? Yeah, Counselor.
Yeah, following right up with that. You said there's a margin of error, and of course, I don't really care what the margin of error is, but I do care. What happens if we do hit that .8 in that 20-year window? You know, all of this calculation was wrong. This is supposed to be an expressway out there. So if we hit the .8, at that point, we have reached a problem.
Yeah.
What happens? Does it just no longer be, is it no longer an expressway? Or what process takes place at that point?
Yeah, so that's that continual management of development review to understand. So let's pretend, let's pretend we get a great employer on that 160 acres, and it has so many more jobs than we thought it was going to have, and so the traffic numbers change. So as we go through the review of the process for that development, they have to do, again, transportation scenarios as they apply. They have to do a traffic impact analysis as they apply. They work with the ODOT...
Who is "they"?
Oh, excuse me, the developer, so the applicant, right? And so they're hiring a consultant, they're using the ODOT model, and they're running the numbers based on, and their standardization for how to run these numbers based on state-adopted standards. And so that will come back and say, you know what, based on our numbers, the Norton Lane and Highway 18 interchange is now at a .84, and previously it was at .78 before you proposed your development. So you, developer, are not going to be able to move forward with your development unless you can figure out how to make that .84 go back down below .80. And what that means is usually you're trying to get the local traffic off the state system. So you then start building the local system in a more robust manner so that people are traveling on local roads and on the highway. And that's when that whole local collector system is so important and comes into play. And so you build the road, then you run the scenario again, and you see less traffic going through those intersections on the highway.
When you say local, you're talking about building frontage roads at that point?
Frontage roads and any other additional roads that we, so the frontage roads are the collectors, and that's what's in our TSP, the stratus and cumulus that run parallel to Highway 18, and that's meant to take local traffic along the route there. And then there's a whole other system that supports that as well in terms of local roads. But let's pretend the local roads can't carry, the local roads are congested. So we've gotten to the point where the local roads can't assume more local traffic, right? And so now we're at that, that intersection is still at a .84 based on the modeling. Then there's a couple of things that could occur. One, we deny the application. We deny the development. It doesn't happen. ODOT says, we're held to this transportation planning rule, which tells us how to operate moving through this, but we say, you know, unfortunately, you're not going to be able to move forward. Or two, we say, you can move forward, but it can only be this size of development based on the number of trips anticipated so that you keep it under that .80. Or we say, let's move into the next phase of the plan. The next phase of the plan would be build the interchange at Cumulus, shut down the intersection at Norton Avenue. That's cost this much money. You developer, if you have that much money, move forward and develop it. If you don't have that much money, we need to start putting into our planning process and start building towards that. And so, but it's a managed process. We, I shouldn't say we will never because I don't know what will happen in 20 years, but right now, within the system, it's always built back into that standard. That's an adopted standard by the state for how that system performs.
Okay, so the building out of the interchange at a potential time later, that's already in which plan?
So the Oregon Highway 18 corridor refinement plan, put together in 1996, put together a plan over time, it has three phases in it, of how Highway 18 will evolve as growth occurs and more vehicular congestion occurs on Highway 18. And it has three different phases of transportation improvements to manage that mobility and throughput, to ensure that it always remains an expressway and a freight route. We are in Phase 1 right now, based on growth that's occurred. And there's a couple of different reasons for that. When the plan was, a lot of people, I think, expected us to get to Phase 2 or Phase 3 quicker than we have, and so that, I think that's been some of the confusion. A lot of people have anticipated we would need those improvements now because we would have grown either faster or more aggressively than we have, but we haven't. That's just the reality. Also, the UGB in this area is, was anticipated to be much bigger, so much more land within the city limits, has frontaged the Highway 18 on both the north side and the south side than what we actually have. So the impact to the highway is different as well.
Okay, so to be clear, so that I understand what you're saying, that highway has to stay an expressway, period?
Yes, that's an adopted standard. Unless the state changes their Oregon Highway Plan, they have to amend the Oregon Highway Plan to amend that. And there are some cities that ask for alternative mobility standards. You'll hear that discussion come up, where the city will apply to say, we want this intersection to have this different mobility standard so development can occur, and there's a process in which that takes place, but it is an amendment to the state plan. It's a fairly intense process to get there, and there's no discussion of that.
Okay.
I've heard in McMinnville.
And we have, the state has a plan that we can still implement to allow for more traffic on Highway 18. We're just in Phase 1 of potentially up to 3. And when we start looking at those, that could be funded by the developer, it could be funded by a combination of ODOT and developer, it has multiple ways of potential funding if we have to go to that movement, but the state is not going to allow build-out that's going to push past that.
Yes.
Am I hearing that correctly?
Right now, per the process.
Okay.
And that final phase is when you do have an interchange at Cumulus and Highway 18, so an interchange, the flying interchange there, and we shut down the intersection at Norton Avenue. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that, and then all you have are the collector roads going east and west along there. And then you have a pedestrian bridge somewhere along Norton Avenue, but that's Phase 3.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for, you've done yeoman's work on this project, and thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you, and I apologize that Andy and Josh aren't here because I am not a transportation expert. So if you had more questions on that, I could bring them to the table.
Counselor Gary.
I have a bunch more questions on the VC ratio, but I think, especially in light of that, is it possible maybe to get some questions to them? Or maybe if they have sort of a policy paper on VC ratios, because I'm also interested in sort of changes in degrees of VC ratios and how those affect safety, at what degree, if there's a leap by five or something like that, whether, I don't, to me, I also have no concept of what .80 means versus 1.0 and the changes from difference between .80 and .90 in safety terms or seven. So are there resources that they could point us to, since we're keeping it open if we do that?
Yeah.
Educate ourselves on VC ratios?
I think that would be great.
Yes.
Because I feel uncomfortable being your subject matter expert on that. And so we could either bring them, and I'll look to Bill to help me through this process, but we could either bring them back to your public hearing on July 26, or if you wanted to have some dedicated time with them in a public meeting, I'm assuming we might be able to schedule that before July 26, get those questions for you answered, so you can keep July 26 open for public testimony as much as you want.
I just feel bad because I think they were, they sat through the entire process last time, and we didn't engage them at all, so.
And that is why they were there, and they intended to be here tonight, and I don't see any emails from them either, so I don't know what happened with that.
Yeah, I don't have a dog in the hunt. I don't know if we need to make a special, I'm happy to even just launch those questions electronically and get resources to read offline unless anyone else feels passionately, or if they were going to be there at the next meeting to be able to direct some questions.
I think the best thing to do, because this is questions that everyone has, I think the best thing to do is if you have questions, why don't you provide them to me? I will get answers from them. We can provide them to you in writing, put them in the record so everybody has them. And then if you want to have them at the July 26 meeting, we can bring them in for that and have them give the staff report.
Yeah, that works for me. That's cool with anybody else.
That sounds great.
I do have, I'm sorry, I do have one more.
Please, go ahead.
On the concern that some residents have expressed about big box stores, it is, I don't know how much I can say, given we have a land use planning coming before us, and since it's not before me, I can pretty much say anything at this point, right? Am I...
You can say anything in terms of what you would like to see happen on that site from a policy perspective.
Okay, so from a policy perspective, I'm not a big fan of having that become a regional mall myself. So at least from a big box regional mall kind of environment. Is there a way we as policymakers can ensure that the plan that we're putting together will help to prevent said development from occurring?
Yeah, so the area plan is your guiding plan, right? So we could put principles in there, value statements in there, we could put in the implementation plan that the city shall move forward with writing a code that says X, Y, and Z. It could have limitations on size of development, tenants, size of tenants of development, all that sort of stuff. Bill, if I'm wrong, please let me know, but I know I've worked with other communities where those types of codes have been put into place based on those concerns.
Perfect. That's, thank you very much.
And just echo what Heather says, that's...
Thank you. Any other?
Mayor, I think Bill Kabizman is trying to respond.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and Heather. I just wanted to echo what Heather said. This is a place that if you want that development in three-mile lane area, you start that process by putting broad policies here, and then when code gets written for those particular areas, that's when the size limitations or other types of things that you'd want would come forth.
Were councilors able to hear? All right, community? Okay. Okay, do councilors have any other questions of staff or legal at this time? Thank you. We will now start to hear public testimony on the proposal. Our role is to listen to the public testimony and to ask clarifying questions when appropriate. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We will begin this evening with those who signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name and address for the record. And Claudia, who's our first person testifying this evening?
One of clarification, Mayor. Are we allowed to ask questions of panelists in this type of hearing, or is it just a...
I believe we can ask clarifying questions at this time.
Of the people who speak? Okay, thank you.
Claudia?
We'll start with Ilsa Purce.
Thank you.
Ilsa Purce, 5765 Northeast Mineral Springs Road in Carlton. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. In May, in the News Register, Jeb Ladeen wrote, "The 2022 Three Mile Lane Plan is well-intended, highly documented, professionally prepared, and responsive to some legitimate local interests. But all that doesn't make it the answer to a simple but complicated question: What does McMinnville want?" And I couldn't agree more. Do we want to be known for a mega shopping center, or do we want to be known as the historic, vibrant, and innovative community for which we are becoming very well-known? I don't want us to be known only as a wine tourism destination, but I also don't want us to become a shopping mecca like lots of other suburban communities. The notion of retail leakage seems to be the driving force propelling this plan instead of all of the innovative things that could happen out there. We are told what was, we are not told the methodology that is used to assess what you can't buy here. How do you measure what people might want that they might have to stray to Portland or Salem in order to buy that aren't exactly necessities of life? I and many other people moved here 30 years ago from a major metropolitan area mostly because of what wasn't here: crowding, traffic, and lots of congestion that didn't improve anyone's quality of life. Sometimes people, myself, sometimes people, myself included, stray to Portland to buy certain things. But is it McMinnville's job to make sure that everything some people might occasionally want become available within five miles of home? Would buying these optional items from a chain store really help McMinnville's economy or just help the bottom line of the national chain? Is going to a larger city for certain medical procedures considered medical leakage? In the 2020 Economic Opportunity Analysis, there is reference to this mysterious retail leakage number, but it then goes on to say, and I quote, "150,000 square feet, or about 28% of retail leakage, will be captured in the Three Mile Lane area," end quote. That's about... That's about the size of a neighborhood activity center, which is apparently what the neighborhoods, the neighbors initially said they wanted when they started going to the meetings that were held. But what if instead of a chain mall and a shopping mecca, there was an, there was an agricultural innovation hub where locally grown crops could be converted to value-added products? What about creative and performing arts? There are so many community-oriented ideas that have yet to be explored, things that improve quality of life. My very small Third Street business does ongoing fundraising for a well-known local charity, as do many other local businesses. Would a national chain do the same?
I'll say you're towards the end of your time if you'll conclude your thoughts.
Thank you.
Does any Counselor need any?
I'm sorry, any other questions?
We're just finding out. Does any Counselor need anything clarified regarding the testimony of this speaker? Thank you. Claudia?
Next, we have Margaret Cross.
Thank you for continuing this hearing. I think the case cannot be made that this plan enjoys widespread public support, and I think this was due to flaws in the public process. The focus groups, the open house and the town hall were three years ago. The public only had one opportunity to comment on the proposed alternatives, all of which included a large retail center. No other alternatives were offered. We have no attendance records or summaries from either the public or the advisory committees. The advisory committees did not meet the diversity and inclusion standards. The public didn't hear about the final plan again until early this year. The hundreds of planned pages of plan materials are only available online where they're difficult to read, and the limited reporting of public comments has not been accurate and I don't think supports some of the things that have been claimed as our community vision. For example, a poster from July 11, 2019, was put into evidence to show public support for a large retail center. However, analysis of the 64 comments actually shows more people wanted affordable housing, recreational facilities, and improvements to existing infrastructure in schools. A total of 36% expressed interest in additional retail development of any type. 14% made totally unrelated comments, but 50% wanted improvements or expansion of civic infrastructure. The comments and analysis, I'm going to enter into, I'll leave them with Claudia. The May 2019 virtual survey had also very weak results. Only two questions pertained to the plan. 21 people responded to the proposed land use question, and only 13 responded to the transportation question. Support was mixed. I'll attach the analysis. Concerns have centered on the proposed retail center and the impacts and the costs of the transportation plan. However, support exists for other elements of the plan. Friends of Yamhill County provided thoughtful alternatives for the parcel south of OR 18 that better accord with our great neighborhood principles. I think these proposals have merit and should be considered. Most of all, we need public debate and dialogue, but first, we need to have information out there. So I have some suggestions. I forwarded them to Director Richards, and I did receive a response on that. But we need to take a close look at the supporting documents. We need to take a look at this six-week process of public outreach. I don't think social media and flyers accomplish this. We need meetings where people can come after they've, after they've seen the plan, maybe in the newspaper with an insert, and have a chance to sit and discuss it in open forum, have debate, dialogue, and then document it, so we really have a sense of what the community vision actually is.
Margaret, you're towards the end of your time, so if you'll conclude your thoughts.
I'm concluded. Any questions?
My question's the same. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sid Friedman.
Sid Friedman, representing Friends of Yamhill County. I want to thank Heather for her staff report, and thank you for taking testimony tonight. I do want to respond to a few things I heard in the staff report. First, the, what had previously been labeled a retail center has been relabeled a mixed-use town center. The planning director has said that she can't support residential development, any residential development in that portion of the plan area, so all of the uses in the mixed-use area will be commercial uses, as I understand it. So I wonder what the mixed-use really is. Also importantly, the plan as drafted now has no limits on total size of buildings, total square footage, or total amount of retail. So if those are things that the community wants to see, the time to articulate them is now in this high-level vision document, which will be part of the comprehensive plan, because future development applications will need to be consistent with it, as your planning director pointed out. I do want to respond briefly to this notion that the city is somehow, has a commercial land deficit that it is bound to address by rezoning land south of Highway 18. That was a product of, as you may recall, when the city adopted its urban growth boundary expansion a couple of years ago, the city went back to the old 2001 numbers and the old 2001 EOA, Economic Opportunities Analysis, which showed a sizable commercial deficit. And in order to address that, this was, this policy was put into the plan. Since then, as I think you know, the city adopted a new Economic Opportunities Analysis in 2013, which superseded that old analysis, and per that current analysis, the city has no commercial land deficit. We walked through this in detail in our written testimony submitted back in May. As far as the, the so-called boxes or the size of retail, or whether this is large-format retail, it's true that the plan doesn't call for large-format retail, neither does it say it shouldn't be there. And you should be aware that the, your staff's recommendations in the largest of the plant, of the individual zone change applications, does call for three large format, two to three large-format stores in that vicinity or on that land. Our traffic engineer did submit some, a letter a month ago, addressing some of the deficiencies in the staff and the, in the traffic analysis, but I do want to point out that at the last Parkway Committee meeting, Dan Fricki, representing ODOT, said, he's our regional representative, or regional ODOT guy, said, "We do not have the ability to stop or limit development until improvements are made." So the ODOT and the plan can call for developments, or transportation improvements, but he said explicitly that we don't have the ability to stop development until those improvements are made.
Sid, you're close to the end of your time. If you could conclude your, you're at the end of your time. If you could conclude your thoughts, please.
Okay, great, great. So I guess I just conclude by saying, we're encouraged that the hearing will be continued to allow for more community dialogue. A productive dialogue requires that all perspectives be at the table and have an adequate opportunity to present information and be heard by staff, by Council, and by each other, and we look forward to hearing how we and other interested community members can participate going forward.
Thank you. Does any Counselor have any questions or need any clarifying testimony? Sal?
Yeah, Sid, how does, how are you defining large-format stores, and is it the same definition that our planning department's using?
I do not know how your staff is using it. I think of, you know, Walmart, the existing Walmart's 100,000 square feet. I think of that as large format. The largest of the three pending plan, plan, excuse me, zone change applications, your staff recommended condition allows two and potentially three stores of 135,000 square feet in size, which is considerably larger than the existing Walmart. So I guess big boxes in the eye of the beholder, but if the city wants to put those kinds of, wants to limit those kinds of stores in this area, the time to express that is now in the vision document, and right now, that is not in the vision document.
Any other questions, Counselor?
I have one based on what you just said. Is the, the, the statement that they're wanting two or three 335,000 square foot, is that in the amendments that are coming to us later, or is that part of the plan document that we have now?
Not part of the plan document.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify for the record, what it says is a maximum of one to two, and it also has a provision in it that says that whatever is put into the plan document, the three-mile lane area plan, and also the overlay, whichever one is more restrictive will be the one that, that the development needs to comply with.
So in other words, what we put on this high-level plan is going to be the definer? Thank you.
I do agree with that. If you want something to limit it, the time to do it is now in this.
Thank you.
Sid, back to the square footage thing, so is it Friends of Yamhill County's hope that that is capped at 100,000, the size of Walmart, or kind of going back to Sal's question, what is, what's that threshold for Friends of Yamhill County?
Ideally, Friends of Yamhill County would like to see the neighborhood activity standards adopted for the, for neighborhood-serving commercial within this area. That has smaller caps. It allows a grocery store of up to 40,000 square feet in size and other, other businesses of up to 30,000 square feet in size. Ideally, we believe that should be further west, towards northwest logging, and, you know, we did hear the community concerns about asphalt plants or other noxious industry. That area could be rezoned for a lighter industrial zone, which would preclude those kinds of noxious industrial uses.
Any other questions, Counselors?
So you're, in your interpretation, Sid, then, then a grocery store of, say, the size of Safeway would be a large scale, large format?
I don't think, no, not really. And that's, could be neighborhood-serving. I mean, that's, you know, I think, you know, Ross is, I think, 30,000 square feet somewhere in there. Safeway might be 35,000. You know, I think, you know, that whole Safeway complex, if you look at it in its entirety with the buildings running into each other, I would, I would call that a large-format mall, but, you know, again, it's a term of art, not a term of science.
I just want to say, I really appreciate your coming with, you know, real-world examples of the sizes. It's really helpful, Sid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Doesn't sound like it.
No, I was going to ask for what 40,000 means.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Claudia?
Next, we have Jeff Knapp on Zoom.
Hello, am I, is this on?
Yes, you're on. If you could speak loudly and clearly, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Jeff Knapp, I am the Executive Director of Visit McMinnville. I am not speaking on behalf of Visit McMinnville, but as myself as a resident here in McMinnville. I'm at 1036 Northeast Cowles. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments, and I'm sorry that I have not been able to catch everyone's testimony. I just logged on a little bit ago, but I was part of the process in, in going through this planning process and the data, and I just wanted to go on record, supporting the zoning, the commercial zoning for a couple of different reasons. One, the idea that I do believe that there is opportunity, and I do think that the community does, the economic development opportunity to support jobs and also to address retail leakage. Do you think that's a real thing in our community, and data shows that? I think we have a lot of, I'd like to speak on behalf of families, you know, with, as a person with children and a, that are shopping and opportunities are limited here in McMinnville, and those types of amenities help attract, retain talent for businesses. People are looking to take jobs and relocate, having those resources are critical, especially for families. And my fear with the work that we do in tourism of, I want this to be a place where everyone is, can afford to live and that has the amenities that you would look for in other communities to serve by your, have many different options for shopping. So I just wanted to go on record and say that I support that, and I would encourage the Council to consider, consider the zoning of commercial properties there, so.
Thank you. Any questions from Council?
I have a question that may, may taps into your knowledge, despite you're maybe not representing that group, but, and just something I'm wrestling with as I hear people talk tonight on this subject, but what is the difference between our retail leakage and other people's tourism dollars and vice versa? Other people's retail leakage and our tourism dollars? Does that question make sense?
It is. I can't speak to, you know, the only, the data about retail leakage is really specific to the work done around this plan, so I can't speak to other communities. I can speak to visitor spending, and I can speak that we will have more accurate data on that next month, actually, but I wouldn't be able to speak to volumes or how we, you know, a city of our size compares to others. I can say that looking at that data, it was pretty, there is a lot of dollars moving out of here, and then, and I know that, you know, that can be, that is what it is. I don't, I don't know how to say otherwise. I do think there, if we can capture those dollars locally and provide jobs and put those dollars and tax dollars back into our community, you know, I look at that as, as being a better thing. You know, commercial, commercial properties provide great tax revenue for much-needed programming for city and city infrastructure and can, and the investment in developing those lands for commercial can help pay for the industrial investments that we need along, in all of the land out there to pursue greater, higher-density manufacturing, a potential innovation center, and all of those things. So I think this decision is really a piece of the puzzle, and, you know, sure, I don't want box stores on every corner. I agree, I care very deeply about what the city looks like and how it operates, but I think we need to look at it within a larger context.
Thank you. Any other questions from Counselors?
I just, wow, that was loud. Jeff, thanks for your, taking the time to be on with us today. How, you're an analyst of retail and commerce, you know, more so than most of the folks up here. I'm curious, your thoughts, what types of amenities do you think we need in the community for just local residents? Like, what do you see that we're missing? And do you see this facility playing any role in tourism as it's kind of being laid out to us today? Two separate questions.
In order, I think that we see, we see good, we see leakage for home goods continuing to happen, although we do have two new home goods. It sounds like home goods coming to answer some of that leakage. Clothing, we have deficits around clothing on both sides, but especially men's clothing, clothing in general. So home goods, clothing, the data showed that we could still support more restaurants, interestingly enough, when we have a lot, but it seems like that, at least that's what the data was, if I recall, showing. But it, it seems like that, at least that's what the data was, if I recall, showing. As far as it's serving visitors, I think, yeah, I mean, there's, I, we could argue that, I don't know. I mean, certainly visitors would utilize, as I look at that corridor also as a, you know, there's so much traffic moving through our area to the coast. I could see it as a, a spot that could provide visitors that are moving through the area and visit, and as well as the community that is here that surrounds us for much needed retail. I know anecdotally that the Lowe's, for instance, serves the majority of the coast. You know, there's people that, that are driving here to McMinnville to do their shopping because there's not any Home Depot or Lowe's type facilities on the coast. So I don't know what type of commercial, I'm not here to, you know, limit that or make recommendations per se, but we could definitely find data and we could target those conversations to support the type of investment we might like to see.
Thank you. Other questions from councillors? Thank you very much. Claudia?
That was everyone that preregistered.
Thank you. Is there anyone at Civic Hall who wishes, who wishes to testify on this proposal? Please indicate, indicate so by raising your hand. Hey, please come up and remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi. Duncan Scott at 1388 Northwest Meadows Drive here in McMinnville. Yeah, I think it's a good plan. Perfect is kind of the enemy of the good, so you can nitpick it a lot, and it's scary because you're saying, here's a bunch of land and something's gonna happen with it. But, you know, I've, that my whole life, that has been empty land in the city limits and nothing's ever happened there, and I don't really like shopping at Walmart. And if you don't shop at Walmart, then by definition, everything I can't buy on Third Street is basically leakage. And, you know, I see people, I'm not the only person to do that, to go out of town, and I'm not really excited to have a bunch of big box stores, but I wouldn't exactly cry if there was a Costco in town. So I gotta be honest. It, it's hard, you can't control as the city, what is going to happen with that space? All you can try to do, I feel like, is provide direction and opportunity for good actors to come in and build in that space. If there isn't these kind of large scale commercial spaces, somebody's gonna come in and they're gonna just bulldoze and, and make changes the way that they wanna do, and they're not going, the people who do those kind of requests are not going to be the good faith actors. If you want people to come in and build conscientiously in your community, you have to provide them with space in which to do that. And I feel like McMinnville's a little lacking in that regard commercially. Yes, we have commercial space, but it's scattered all around, and there are people who, if you, if I met someone and is like, oh, you should build in McMinnville, and then they went and looked at zoning map, and they're like, there's, there's no big spot to build. Those people, somebody is gonna come in and say, hey, I, I just wanna do it anyways, but those maybe aren't the people we wanna be interacting with. And, you know, we should, as a community, I feel like we should provide the opportunity to engage with commercial entities that want to be here. And I feel like sometimes that doesn't happen.
Thank you, Duncan. Is there any councillor that has any clarification regarding this testimony? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else at Civic Hall that would like to speak? Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting who wishes to testify on this proposal? If so, please indicate your interest by raising your hand in the participant section of the Zoom controls or by sending a chat message to Claudia Sisneros indicating that you wish to testify. Yeah, please. Adam?
We're waiting on that. Heather, could you expand a little bit? We've heard a lot about retail leakage, and how does online shopping figure into that and just kind of how people have pivoted their shopping habits with COVID and just in general of the online retail space?
So we've been asked that question a lot. So what we've done is we've reached out to Leland Consulting, who put the market analysis together for us. We are commissioning them to refine it a little bit more based on that question, so we can bring that back to you for July 26th. That's another part of the due diligence that we can do as we continue to vet and refine the information. But when talking to them about it, so the, so it's credit card data that they're using to, to do the market analysis. It's proprietary, so they can't give us the, the details of it, but they said it was not, the majority was not online.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have anybody signed up on Zoom to testify?
No.
No, okay. Thank you. Is there anyone on the phone who wishes to testify? If so, please unmute your phone and let us know that you would like to testify.
We don't have anyone on phone.
Thank you. That concludes our public testimony for this evening. Does the staff have anything that they'd like to add to the record at this time, or does City Council have any additional questions for city staff?
I do have one. Heather, will you be, have you been kind of taking notes of the questions that have been made by our constituents? And will you be at a later date providing some of the, or, or responses to the comments that have been made?
Well, so the, I'll tell you what I have taken notes for, and then I'm happy to work based on City Council direction. The quote from Dan Frickie surprised me because I have seen ODOT do that before in another community, so I'm gonna circle back with him and clarify that. And then I thought that what we could do is do sort of an analysis of existing square footage in terms of sites that we're familiar with here in McMinnville, and then also compare them to sites that we know of in Lake Sherwood or Newburgh, and so that people can get in their head what, what it means, what the different sizes mean and, and the different types of retailers associated with those sizes. We will be looking at the market analysis. We, we are in discussion with Leland Consulting about that. I will wait to get more questions from Councillor Geary about the VC stuff, and we'll get that to the transportation experts and have them respond for you, both in writing and bring them back to the next public hearing to respond as part of the staff report.
When you get those VC questions together, one question I'd like to see in there is there's, there's a pretty good sized discrepancy between the traffic expert that spoke at the, at the.
Parkway Committee.
Thank you. Not enough sleep. Parkway Committee and what, what was presented by ODOT, could we have some sort of statement delineating what the difference is and why the difference is there? So that, just for our own knowledge, what exactly happened to have such a wide discrepancy?
Sure. So I will work with Andy Mortensen on putting that together, too. And just for those who don't know, at the Parkway Committee, the city gave a presentation at their meeting on June 9th, I believe it was. And then Rick Nies, who's been hired by Friends of Yamhill County as a transportation engineer, provided testimony as well and then stated that we had provided the wrong data points and it was something else. There was some confusion associated with that, and so from both Parkway Committee members and others who were at that meeting, and we've gotten a lot of questions about it, so we'll bring back clarification.
Heather, when you're compiling that list of size areas, could you include Fred Meyer in that? And then also, I've heard from other constituents on the desire for fuel to be out that way, so what is the square footage of a typical gas station if somebody wanted to locate that in that overlay area?
Yeah, and I think the other thing I could do is bring back to you the land uses that are existing right now in our neighborhood serving commercial zone, the land uses that are described in the Neighborhood Activity Center. That's not actually a zone, so we'll have to figure out how to assign that because it's, it's based on having residential development around it as well. And I, I will say, as the planning director, I would not recommend residential development in this area. The mixed use town center is meant to be retail and office space, and that's as described in the plan. That's the mixed uses. So we, we can bring that back to you, so you can see what that looks like in terms of the different zoning tools that we have today. We can always create a special district, which you create your own zone, your own different uses in that as well.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the council? Councillor Mankey? Do you have questions? No? Councillor Gary?
The economic opportunity analysis, this is, that were referenced, who, what, who, who was the author of those? Both, both the, if I got my years right, 2002 and the 2013 one?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. Sid might know that or Mark, they participated in those. Were they both ECO Northwest?
The 20, 2001 was ECO Northwest, 2013 was Eric Hovey.
Oh, yeah, Eric Hovey.
And not the fact that funded by. What, what was the consultant's name?
Eric Hovey was the consultant for the 2013 EOA.
I didn't hear the last part. What did he say?
He said that the EOA for, was funded by Kimco, though Kimco did not participate on the project advisory committee associated with that at the planning commission level. There was testimony that Kimco actually drove that process, and so I was asked to bring back some information to the planning commissioners about that, and we provided them with a copy of the plan that had the project advisory committee members and some memos between Doug Montgomery, the planning director, and City Council at the time, as to how all that would play out and be managed in such a way to, for the arm's length provision of it. It was reviewed by City Council, adopted and acknowledged by the state. I did want to correct one thing, though. So to one of the comments you heard tonight, that we have an EOA that shows there is no commercial land deficit, that's actually not true. We have a 2001 acknowledged EOA. We worked through that for the UGB amendment. We have a 2013 EOA that was acknowledged as well by the state. That's our most recent one. That one showed that we had a deficit of 36 acres of industrial land, I mean, of commercial land, a surplus of industrial land, and the recommendation in that EOA was to rezone the surplus industrial land to commercial land. We have a draft EOA right now that we've been working on. It needs to be, it needs to be amended based on the most recent UGB amendment. The draft EOA that we've been working on has a significant deficit of commercial land associated with it. I suspect that to change. I don't know if it will go down to no deficit of commercial land. I'm nervous about that because I think that if we do have deficit of commercial land, we will be looking again within the city as to where we're going to find that.
Thank you. Okay, well, I guess I, do we need to entertain a motion to continue the hearing? No? Okay, the hearing is continued until 7 o'clock on July 26th, 2022. Thank you, everybody.
Excuse me, Mayor, I do, I do want Bill, I was shaking my head for something else. So I do want Bill Kabeizman to advise you on whether you need to entertain a motion.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It, it probably is better to have a motion and just to, to make it official that it, the matter is continued.
I'd like to move that we continue this to July.
I second it.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councillor Chenworth and a second from Councillor Mankey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Hearing is continued until 7 o'clock on July 26th, 2022. Now we're having a public hearing to consider Resolution Number 2022-37, a resolution adopting a building fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting building fee schedules on the effective date of this fee schedule. And consider Resolution 2022-38, a resolution adopting a planning fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting planning fee schedules at this time this fee schedule becomes effective. The next two resolutions will be addressed under one staff report, but each voted on individually later in the meeting. Does any councillor need to declare a potential conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding these two resolutions? I'd like to call again on Heather Richards, her planning director, to present.
Yes, so Madam Mayor and councillors, this is a public hearing to consider annual fee schedule updates for both the Building Division and the Planning Division. We bring them to you at this time. And to walk through the building one first, so per state regulations, we need to provide a proposed building fee schedule to the state 45 days in advance that they post on their website prior to us going through a public hearing process and adopting them. So we have done that, I believe, oh, he is here. I wanted to introduce Stuart Ramsey, our building official. You guys don't have a lot of time to interact with him, but he is here this evening for this discussion. We love Stuart as our building official, the community loves him as our building official. We're very thankful to have him and want to encourage him to stay as long as possible, Stuart, publicly stating that. So anyways, the building, the Building Division is a division that is funded 100% through the fees collected with the building permits, and their work is all associated with those building permits. So it's, it's apparates like an enterprise fund, more or less. We have a policy where we want the Building Division Fund to have a six to 12 month reserve. Best practices moving forward right now are about 12 to 24 months of reserve because the building market is so cyclical and, and McMinnville is so small that if we lose employees, it will be hard to bring them back. And so we might move in that direction, but right now you have an adopted policy of six to 12 months. We did a fee study back in 2018 to sort of rightsize the building fees, and we've been, since then, escalating them via the CPI. The CPI, as you just heard, was about, it's hovered anywhere between 7 and 9% over the last six months. Our recommendation is a 6% increase for the CPI associated with the building fee schedule, so that's what you have in front of you. There's a couple of new fees associated with the building fee schedule that we wanted to share with you. We are encouraging electronic submittals. It saves both our developers and our team in terms of efficiencies and also paper. And so we do have a fee in there now where we will be, we will be adding a surcharge when we have to digitize the paper permits that are coming in to try and get people to electronic. And our staff is working with all of our clients and customers in terms of how to get things digitized and submitted through our portal. You can actually submit permits from a portal online from wherever you want to be to get them to us, so we're making, trying to make this as easy as possible. We are also adding a copy and print fees for copies larger than 11 by 17. We are seeing a lot of requests for that, so we're trying to recover those costs. And, and then, let's see, what else is in here? Oh, something that Stuart may want to explain, which is a new surcharge of $200 will be added for each medical gas inspection that must be performed by specialty inspector. McMinnville is such a, we're the 17th largest city in the state, but we're still a small city. And so we don't have a program or the funds to hire specialty inspectors as FTEs in our, in our building program, and so we are consulting out for those with third party vendors when they are needed. And because we consult out for those, we're paying for travel time and their time here to do those inspections. And so those specialty inspections are more expensive here. That's just our reality as we move through that process. The planning fee schedule's a little bit different. So if you recall, our planning fee schedule several years ago in 2017, we looked at it and we saw that it was capturing about 10% of the overall cost of administering a program for, for current planning, that's planning relative to development that serves developers, so it's a specialty user. And so we came back to City Council and we were directed to try and get that to a full cost recovery, too, but do it incrementally over time by doing an initial fee increase of 55% and then 10% for the next five years. We did not do a fee increase in 2020 based on COVID, so we have added a year to that process. But the recommendation to you tonight for the planning fee schedule is the 10% increase plus 6% for the CPI to keep us on track. So it is a 16% increase. For those pieces in the planning fee schedule that we've heard from City Council, let's keep these particular fees subsidized. So I'm thinking of things, you directed us to keep sign permits at a very low level because that's, that's, our existing businesses are participating in that program, and we wanted them to, we wanted to say we support our existing businesses. For those things where you said, let's subsidize these, the increase to those are only 6%. It's keeping within that sort of value system of subsidizing those elements. Another one in there is the appeal fee as well. I did want to point out that we have a public hearing request fee in our fee schedule. Public hearings are much, are, add a lot more in terms of resources with staff time and your time at these meetings, and so it is more expensive as we go, as we're going through our process, we're getting. As we go, as we're going through our process, we're getting more requests for public hearings that, for those types of land use applications that don't normally go to a public hearing. We have not been applying that fee as part of our process, but those specialty public hearings are very time-intensive and resource-intensive of our team. And so we are recommending that we move forward applying those fees, but we're actually also recommending that we reduce it fairly significantly so it's not onerous as well. And then we added some, some fees to the planning fee schedule based on things that we were seeing happen and occur that we weren't capturing with our fees. Some of those I wanted to point out to you were, we added fees for our wireless small cell facilities. You, as a city council, adopted a resolution in 2019 that had fees in it for wireless small cell facilities, but we hadn't captured that anywhere in a fee schedule, and so we're bringing it into our planning fee schedule. And, and that, that has the CPI escalator in it. We also have added land use applications not specified. So we do have some applications come in that we don't actually have specified in our fee schedule. In Oregon, we, we classify our land use applications as type 1, 2, 3, and 4, based on the type of land use application. So we just have in the fee schedule, if something comes in that's similar to one of those types, here's the fee for it, so that we're not always having to second-guess what that is. Oh, and the other thing we're adding is a fee for a traffic impact analysis review. So in this community, with some of our larger projects, there's been a lot of concern about the impact of traffic with the new development. And we haven't historically, in McMinnville, one, requested a traffic impact analysis, or two, have the skillsets and resources in-house to review it. And we still don't have the skillset and resources in-house to review it, but we are requesting it, and we're now contracting with a third-party vendor to review it. So we would like to have those costs recovered for that, for that review. And so that is also added to the fee schedule.
A parking lot review? It looks like you've added that. What's?
Yeah, so what's happening is we're having people come to us who just want to put a parking lot in without an improvement associated with it. So maybe for storage of vehicles or, or now you're getting a lot of car lots that don't have any other sorts of improvement, like a building improvement associated with it. And we still put a lot of time into reviewing it because there's still landscaping required and how the parking lot's configured and making sure there's the right number of parking spaces, all that sort of thing. So we added that to capture the cost for that time. We probably do like one or two a year at this point. We bundled the comprehensive plan map amendment and zoning map amendment, and I think we'll start to do more of this. There are things that you, that get bundled here in terms of land use applications that happen together. And so there is, there is a savings in terms of efficiencies of time and review on that, and we want to be able to capture that and pass it on to the client, so. Oh, and lastly, we have in here, review costs for resident, the residential design standards review. There is, there is time associated with that, with the, the code that we just adopted, the missing middle housing code.
So we're ready to take, I don't have in the script to take any counselor comments or questions at this time, but I, I would like to know if there are any additional counselor questions for staff at this time.
I have questions. Heather, what do you estimate for both planning and, both for the planning department, for both departments, what the percentage of cost recovery is currently? Or maybe for building and planning, what's it going to be if we adopt this roughly?
Okay, so for building, it should be presumably 100%, because that's what we're operating under and have been for many years. And so we're just indexing with the CPI, and I'd be happy to invite Stuart up to answer that question if he wants to elaborate further. Okay. For planning, we will probably be at a, I was looking at the numbers myself just recently. We'll probably be at, we have two more years of it, so we'll be at 80%. And that seems to be tracking more or less with the, with the full cost recovery number, which, keep in mind, that's a 2018 number, and many of those fees started at a variety of different levels of recovery than just the 10% across the board.
So I guess I don't understand, just in terms of your, the data that you gave us for building, for example, I don't see, like, there's, there's a line item or a column for full cost recovery, and then there's a column for the current fee, and then there's a column for the proposed new fee. And for building, for example, I don't see any, any of the proposed new fees that meet the cost recovery of 100%. So I was just curious how, because that was my understanding, was it was 100%, but none of the fees matched that full cost recovery.
Well, you might be looking at the, so the building fee schedule, and what's confusing is we, we gave you a schedule that has current fee and proposed fee as part of the staff report, and then the resolution just has the proposed fee. The building fee schedule just has a current fee column and a proposed fee column. The planning fee schedule has the three columns of current fee, full cost recovery, and proposed fee, but it has a building permit review section, and that might be what you're looking at?
That's what I saw. Thank you. Yeah, that, that was what confused me, the building permit review section under the planning. Thank you for that clarification.
Good. Thank you. For all public hearings being heard tonight, please state your first and last name and address for the record. Now I'd like to open the public hearing for comments. We'll begin with Claudia, if you'll call on those who have signed up to provide comments.
We did not get anyone to sign up.
Was any written comment provided? Is there anyone in the room that would like to provide public testimony on this? I'll now close the public hearing. I have a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 budget, as approved by the Budget Committee. We're going to open the public hearing and ask our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
Hello, everyone. So at this public hearing, what, what we're asking for is public comment relative the approved budget by the Budget Committee, which took place on May 18, 2022. A summary of the approved budget was published in the News Register on May 31 for people to be able to examine it. Ahead of adopting the budget formally, that will happen at your next meeting on June 28. And so comments from the public are for you all to assist you in your deliberations on that action. So if, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's the basics of what we're doing here with this public hearing.
Thank you. I'd like to go, do we have councilors with any questions at this point, a process question? Then we'd like to call for public testimony. Claudia, do we have anyone signed up?
No one has signed up.
Is there anyone in Civic Hall that would like to provide public testimony at this time on this hearing? The public hearing is now closed. Public hearing on the proposed uses of state revenue sharing for fiscal year 2022-2023, as approved by the Budget Committee. State revenue sharing law, ORS 221.770, requires cities to annually pass an ordinance or resolution requesting state revenue sharing money. In order to receive state revenue sharing in 2022-23, a city must have levied property taxes in the preceding year and hold a public hearing before the Budget Committee to discuss possible uses of the funds, and hold a hearing before the city council on the proposed uses of the funds in relation to the entire budget. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Finance Director Jennifer Quayar to present.
Well, I think, Mayor, you have covered the highlights of this. The information, the details start on page 104 in your packet, and there are, as, this is the same, we have made no updates relative what was brought before the Budget Committee on May 17. And so unless folks have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I think you've covered all of the reasons why we're going through this public hearing process to hear from folks, as you all deliberate on this, when you, when you go to pass it formally next, next meeting on the 28th.
Thank you. Is there any public testimony on the proposed uses of state revenue sharing for fiscal year 2022-23, as opposed by, as approved by the Budget Committee? Is there anybody in Civic Hall that would like to testify? Is there, nobody on Zoom?
No one has signed up.
No one has signed up. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to testify? No. Okay, we will now close this public hearing. Public hearing for the fiscal year 2022 transient lodging tax, TLT supplemental budget. We're going to open this public hearing and ask our Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
So information on this starts on page 107 in the packet, but we need to have a public hearing on the current year, fiscal year 2022 supplemental budget for the transient lodging tax, because we are proposing to increase that budget by more than 10%. When budgets are increased by that amount or more, you need to have a public hearing. The reason why we are increasing the TLT fund is because just the recovery in the hospitality sector has been greater than anticipated, and so we need to be able to add budget to be able to make the final year, the final quarters payment out to both the city that keeps 30% and also to visit McMinnville, our partner in tourism, who takes 70% of those TLT taxes when people stay in, in McMinnville while they're visiting. So if there are any questions about the details there, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does any counselor have questions for Finance Director? Now call for public testimony. Anybody?
No one has signed up.
Is there anybody in Civic Hall that would like to testify on this public hearing? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to testify on this public hearing? We now close the public hearing. We'll now move to advice and information items from councilors. So let's start with you, Sal, please.
No report. Remy, we haven't met.
Thank you. Adam?
Airport Commission met, and we finalized our minimum standards, so that's moving forward. And then we also had a resignation of one of our Airport Commission members, so if anybody's interested in Airport Commission, that'll be a vacancy that should be posted shortly on the city website. So if anybody has questions about that, my council contact information's on there. Welcome to reach out, and I can go over that in more detail for you. And, yeah, Fire District, we're waiting on the rule board to meet next week on the 21st and make their decision if they're in or they're out. And then everything else I've been in meetings with, I will let you expand on, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Landscape Review Committee meets tomorrow, so no report for DEIAC. We heard from the Finance Department as well as Municipal Court on the efforts they're doing and how we could work together. They worked on a change to the leadership structure of the DEIAC, provided feedback and support for the proclamations we heard this morning, which were, this morning, feels like this morning, at the beginning of this meeting. So thank you for, for getting those done. Appointed ex officio member Abby Thomas from the position of ex officio to full voting member. Heard Parks and Open Spaces master plan update schedule and process from Parks and Rec Director Muir, and then solidified recommendation for the council retreat. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Chenoweth.
Yeah, MEVLC met and narrowed down our priorities list, focusing on our, on two different levels of priorities. Level one being the Innovation Center and helping the Airport Commission on an Economic Development Strategic Plan. And level two, wayfinding signs on Highway 18, gateway improvements, and downtown master plan, as being our focus for the next year. The Historic Landmark Committee met, and we discussed the, well, they discussed, I didn't, I'm not part of that committee, I'm just a liaison. They discussed a request for modifications on 228 Northeast Third Street, which used to be the old pharmacy building in between Gerald's and, and Gem, and went through that process. Also discussed the upcoming hopeful changes at Buchanan Cellars. That's it for me.
Thank you. McMinnville Affordable Housing, oh, oh, I'm, thank you very much. Kelly, Counselor Manke.
Good evening, gang. All right, briefly, on YCAP, they just finished their audit. They received an unqualified opinion. There were some remarks on internal control, which I've taken up with the controller, and we have actually implemented some changes very rapidly to cover that for better internal control. In regard to youth outreach, this is in Newburgh, 66 youths made 260, 276 visits to the Newburgh Drop-In Center. Three youth runaway were sheltered in host homes under the Safe Shelter Program for 52 nights. It's a younger group of runaways. And then seven runaway homeless youth who are a little bit older were sheltered under the Transitional Housing Program. And I say this by way of information that we now have, YCAP has a lease for Youth Outreach MAC, and it was, they, it was finalized, they have keys in hand, and very excited to see that get started. The Turnkey Program has 45 households in, currently being served, and Build for Zero continues to operate through YCAP to help those that are chronically unhoused. Briefly on the Parkway, the loan documents for the city, the local cities match, have pretty much been drawn up. It appears that McMinnville's interest rate will be somewhere around 2% to 2.8%. That would be Newburgh, McMinnville, and depending on the length of time of your loan, Dundee, who had a very short loan term, will have a much higher rate. And then just briefly on the Third Street Improvement Committee, we went over the survey results that were recently compiled, and kind of all voted on what we thought of further developments on this, and that now a new survey has been put out by Heather this last week, I noticed. And I've already done it, so I would highly recommend all of you participated in it, too. That's my report.
Mayor, I missed one thing on my report.
Yes, Counselor Chenoweth, go ahead.
On the, for the Historic Landmarks Committee, they also brought to us the, the staff is putting together a outreach to the public community on, on the historic buildings in the community. This includes pamphlets, a walking tour, as well as posters, and it also will include a speaker series this year. The first speaker will be Michael Hafner, who will be speaking about the history of transportation in McMinnville, and that will be here at McMinnville Civic Hall at 4:00 p.m. on the 16th in two days. Thank you for giving, let me do that.
Thank you very much. Visit McMinnville meets tomorrow. I'm no longer on that committee, so I don't have much to report out. However, because we will, I will be assigning a counselor to that committee, I just want to remind all the councilors that if you'd like the opportunity to attend any committee meetings in June, since there will be some changes happening in July, that that's going on. And then McMinnville Affordable Housing works towards the end of, meets it towards the end of this month. We do also We do also have an opening on McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission, and we'll be looking to fill that. And I believe that that is already, we're, I believe we're already taking, is that open? Do you know? No? No? Is that open? Is that?
We have not started advertising that, but we will put that together.
Okay. That is also coming soon. And while we're on the topic, Airport, McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission and the Budget Committee all have openings, and we need our citizens to volunteer their time, please. The main thing that Counselor, Council President Garvin and I have been working on over the last couple of weeks, of course, have been to bring back, to come back to you with some notes in terms of how we've been able to move forward addressing our ongoing budget deficit. We, I think, did a good job taking the notes from everybody in here. We understand what's important to the council. We've definitely worked to bring all of the thinking and thoughts that we heard here into the methodology conversations that we have been having. The conversations have been very focused on methodologies, not on numbers, other than a minimum goal of rescuing, our rescue dollars is how we've started referring to it. So a minimum goal of taking the $1.8 million of ARPA funds that the council has decided to use in our operating budget for this year and trying to get those dollars replaced and reserved for their intended use. To that end, we have made greater progress on, we've made a tremendous amount of progress, I would say, on a city service charge. And I think there is an alignment between how that process can be carried out going forward and with equity at top of mind, acknowledging that a city service charge is inherently inequitable. And to that end, I'd say we've had a lot of success because we've actually started talking about how we could unfold the city service charge with equity measures in place and how we leave that process open so that it can become more equitable in the sense that we know we will not capture everybody that would need relief from a city service charge upon entry, upon the start of the city service charge, that there's a lot of possibility to expand this to other low-income households that may not be affected by this specific methodology that's being proposed right now. So we will have a proposal, we will have more specifics to you. However, there's an agreement that the city, using the vehicle of water and light bills, could bring a city service charge that would address that $1.8 million. And the implementation timeline on that would probably be about three to four months realistically. So we will have some policy questions for the council in terms of our goals and making sure that we have clearly defined goals going forward with that. On conversations regarding franchise agreements, those are, I would say, at a much more basic level. We, early on, identified that it would be much, it would be easier to make a lot of progress with one and less progress with the other. I would say we have made progress on both fronts in terms of clarity and communication. I'm not sure how, because we have been very focused on methodologies and making sure that our systems can work together to deliver these outcomes, I don't have a numbers set to present to you. And we don't actually, I would say we don't have those numbers yet because the focus has been on how we get there, if that makes sense, and it might not. Would you like to add anything? Okay. So now we'll move to department heads. Going around the room, Mr. Towery.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. A couple of items to report. While, you know, it's generally a school sort of thing, we had a distinct city flavor to the MAC High graduation this year. Your executive team was well represented. Myself, Planning Director Richards and Chief Scales successfully graduated for humans during the ceremony in the rain on Friday of last week. There were 21 valedictorians and 19 salutatorians in the class of about 535. Two of those salutatorians were the daughters of Heather Richards and Matt Scales. And so, wanted to call Hadley and Peyton. My daughter was not among those. She was among the children that it does indeed take a village to raise. And thank you to everyone. This is Kylie's last council meeting. She will be matriculating to the Tuolotin Valley Water District in the future where she gets to do another class and comp system. That's called Instant Karma, Kylie. I just want to take a moment to share my sincere thanks. I have learned a lot from Kylie. I hope she's learned a little bit from us. She has helped to make this organization a better place, and she will be missed but not forgotten. I don't think we're going to name a bench for you or anything right away, but we'll maybe plant a tree in your honor at some point. So I want to take the opportunity to thank Kylie for her service. That position is posted. We will be retaining the part-time services of a consultant to backfill on some of our HR work, primarily recruitment and placement, investigations as needed, and processing claims. Mary Rowe, who is the retired Human Resources Director from Metro and the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, will be working with us on a consultant basis. She'll be available 20-plus hours a week, and she will start next week. She'll not be available the following week. She's got some planned vacation, but we'll be working with Mary. She will mostly work from distance. We will probably have her on a council meeting at least once, so you can be introduced to Mary. I have nothing else to report tonight. Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council.
Thank you, Mr. Towery. Mr. Gall?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you. Director Richards?
Just really quickly, the Third Street Improvement Project is winding down its current phase, which is a concept design phase, so that we can move into engineering on it. We are launching a public engagement process over the next three weeks for this last part of the phase. It will be very similar to our May public engagement process. We'll have an online survey up on our website tomorrow, and it will run through June 24. Many people got the links today. If you got an encrypted link, I apologize. Apparently, I don't know how to use a cybersecurity software very well, but we'll get you an open link for that. We also will have a public open house here in this room next week on June 21st from 6:00 to 8:00. And then we will have a public hearing with your body acting as the Urban Renewal Board and the McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee on July 12. The discussion for this last round of the concept design is looking at materials for the project. So it's a lot of discussion of concrete, pavers, asphalt, things of that nature, and also some additional discussions about how the right-of-way should be utilized in terms of the pedestrian space and the business frontage space as well. So we encourage people to participate. We had 300 responses on our last survey, which is fairly typical for McMinnville in terms of response to a survey. But we had a lot of comments. So people were really engaged in participating and providing comments that have been really interesting to read and incorporate into the process. So we appreciate that.
Thank you. Chief Scales?
Thank you.
Director Baer?
Not so much an update, but another heartfelt thank you to all of you for such an awesome opportunity to serve the city of McMinnville. I want to thank Jeff and our executive management team. It's the best team I've ever worked with. So thank you for supporting me and challenging me and trusting me to bring professional HR to McMinnville, which had not been here before. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm really sad to go. I will miss working with everybody, especially our DEI Committee, which is on record the best committee in the entire city. So I will miss that so, so, so much. And I will not be a stranger. I love this community. I'm a big fan of all the wineries here, so I will be back in MAC quite often. So I won't be a stranger. Thank you.
Thank you. Our city recorder?
We have Susan on the line that wants to.
Oh, thank you, yes. To our Parks and Rec Director, Susan Muir.
Hi, Mayor and Counselors. I just wanted to give a quick update that we, and a thank you. We just finished our workshop week at our Maker Space at the Community Center, and we want to thank Mary Artist. Not only did they advertise our workshops in their store, they tagged us on social media, they reposted our posts, and then they also very generously gave us a donation of art supplies worth over $500 to use at the Maker Space. So we just really couldn't have pulled that off the way we did without Mary Artist, so we're really grateful for them and want to give them a shout out. So thank you.
Thank you.
I actually also do have something to report. City Council elections are up and running for the November 8th general elections. We are taking, I am taking applications for Ward 1, 2, 3, and Mayor position. As always, I really recommend people to sign up early so you can collect your signatures and get those verified by the county. All this information is on our city webpage. And of course, if anyone has questions, let me know. Please advertise to everyone and anyone that's interested in running for council. As always, we want lots of people and.
Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, does any counselor have an item they wish to have removed from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I so move.
Second.
Could we, could you say what you are so moving?
I so move that we accept the consent agenda as proposed.
Thank you. We have a motion by Counselor Manke. And Counselor Gary, is that what you were seconding?
That was what I was seconding, yeah.
Perfect, and a second by Counselor Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The motion passes unanimously, or the consent agenda is accepted unanimously. Oh, you gave me a script for that. See, I was doing that from memory. That's pretty good. But that means I'm lost in my script now. Thank you. Okay, so now to our resolution. We are now going to consider Resolution Number 2022-37, a resolution adopting a building fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting building fee schedules on the effective date of this fee schedule. Like to call on Planning Director Heather Richards to present.
I'm not going to go over the fee schedules again. We went through that as part of the public hearing process. Each resolution adopts a building, a fee schedule separately, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Was there any council discussion at this time? Counselor Chenoweth?
I just have a quick question on procedure. This is, this is a resolution, it's not going to a second vote, right? It's just a one-time vote?
One-time vote.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council discussion? I'd like to ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-37.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Counselor Gary and a second from Counselor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
We have, the resolution has passed a vote of 3 to 1.
4 to 1.
4 to 1. Resolution Number 22-38, a resolution adopting a planning fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting planning fee schedules at the time of this fee, at the time this fee schedule becomes effective. Planning Director Richards, you have anything to add to your previous? Council discussion?
I actually wanted to be yea on the building fee. Can you change that?
Yes. Do we need any formal action in order to change the counselor's vote?
Let the record so reflect.
Let the record so reflect that Resolution Number 2022-37 passed unanimously. May I call for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-38?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Gary and a second from Council President Garvin.
Ooh.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The resolution passed with four votes in the affirmative and one in the negative. And now consider Resolution Number 2022-39, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 and making supplemental appropriations for the transient lodging tax fund. We've heard a presentation from Director Jennifer Quayar. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No, just if folks have questions, I'm here.
Thank you. Is there council discussion at this time? Like a call for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you want to say you're moving the resolution?
I'm moving the resolution to.
Number 22-39?
That's the one. That's exactly what I was after.
Great, thank you. So I have a motion by Counselor Chenoweth and a second by Counselor Garvin. Now, is there any additional council discussion?
Typically, you have a motion and then council discussion, not the other way around. So you can have additional discussion after a motion's been made and seconded.
Is there any additional non-discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously. And now consider Resolution Number 2022-40, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 and making supplemental appropriations for the General Fund and Information Services Fund for approved American Rescue Plan Act projects. Like to call on Finance Director Jennifer Quayar to present.
Okay, so the information on this is included in the staff report on page 108, and the actual resolution is on page 112 of the packet. So there was not a hearing on this because it does not change the budget of the General Fund more than 10%. But we are making a change because we have, as you may recall, we didn't, at the time of establishing our budget for fiscal year 2022, we didn't know yet where and how we were going to spend our ARPA allocation. And so, in the meantime, over the last year, we have made some choices, and some progress has been made this fiscal year. So we do need to get some supplemental appropriations to support those activities. And I just wanted to list off the projects that have activity this year. So we've had some movement with the Municipal Court in clearing backlog. Also, we've been working on City Hall renovations to make things more accessible. We anticipate having some expenditures on culturally sensitive communications and translations activities. Finally, we did hire and we have on board our ARPA grant manager, so there are costs associated with her being on staff this year. We are hopeful that the library actually will get the electric vehicle. Sounds like they got fast-tracked, and so we may have that in hand before June 30. Those are all the General Fund activities. And then also, Scott has been doing a lot of work in what we're utilizing right now in terms of our meetings, of enhancing our meeting room technology for hybrid meetings and such. and such. Those costs will also be incurred for FY '22. So, those are the details of the ARPA, and I hope that you all will support the supplemental budget to appropriate funds for those approved activities.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion? I'd like to ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-40.
So moved.
Second.
Dot 22-40.
I know, I put it in there that time, so we could. I've got a motion by Counselor Manke and a second by Counselor Peralta. Is that you? Yes, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And all those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2022-41, a resolution of the City of McMinnville approving a collection rate increase not to exceed 4% for Recology, Inc. I'd like to call on Finance Director Jennifer Quayar to present.
Okay, so, on this last item, the information is in your packet starting on page 120, and you heard a presentation from Recology staffers about what's been going on there, challenges and what's happened. So, I don't, I don't know if he's still on the line, if, if there are any questions that might be pertinent, pertinent for him to answer. But we have reviewed the request for the rate stud, from, for the rate increase from Recology, and we, we can tell you that it does indeed fit within our existing franchise agreement with Recology to make the 4% increase. Did also, as part of our recommendation, did want to note that subscribers to Recology services in town who also use the transfer station, those folks have also been impacted by increases in rates at the transfer station as well, but that's separate from the franchise agreement. So, if there are any questions, I might be able to answer. Perhaps Jeff Towery may have more insights into things if folks want to discuss any of these details, or.
Thanks, Jennifer. And just so you know, the folks from Recology are still in the room as well if there are questions for them.
Thank you. Thank you both. Is there any council discussion? I'd like to ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-41.
So moved.
Second.
I have a move, a motion from Council President Garvin and a second from Counselor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The resolution has passed unanimously, and I now adjourn the June 14th City Council meeting at 9:46 PM.